And we're recording.
Okay.
And please, everyone, please use your, uh, your microphones if you can.
I'll call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, May 19th, 2022. Call to order. Roll call, Michael Abelin. John Ballas. David Cobb.
Present.
Douglas Bennett here. Patty Housman.
Here.
Nancy Carana.
Here.
Mike Smith, sir.
Here.
And Mel's not here, Doug Taylor is our staff. Ladies and...
And Mel has, uh, sent us a note about being absent.
Okay. Uh, we now call, have called the public, does anyone wish to speak on a subject other than the agenda items? Agenda item number one, public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code. Possible recommendations of mayor and council. Consideration of a po- proposed amendment to zoning code, Article 6. General provisions. 6.17 entitled accessory dwelling units. By removal, by remu- remove, removing text, uh, under, under, re- re- pardon. Remove, can't even read my glasses on. By removing the text under requirements. Proposed change to, to 6.17 accessory dwellings. The requirement after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the building department, an accessory dwel- dwelling unit may be used for family and guest living quarters or rented. And the sentence that we're debating here this evening is if rented, the minimum rental, rental period can be no less than 30 days. Staff, would you want to update us on this?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I, um, we, you know, you, this came before you before and I went to city council in this past unanimously, I believe. I can't remember now, but I think it was. Um, and the, um, great thing was we had a lot of people that wanted to do it and were waiting in the wings to do it, uh, to create an accessory dwelling unit. And, uh, the state has asked us to not do anything with it because of the, uh, they've said that we don't have the right to limit, uh, the amount of time. Now, the, can, I believe that the, uh, contention that the, uh, city attorney had, and I guess they're working on this, is that this was not unlike a variance. Uh, that, uh, we can control a variance, we can add, uh, restrictions to a variance. And that this was, uh, saying that it would be no more, no less than 30 days was not unlike that. Uh, this has held up any movement on the ADU, um, uh, legislation or, you know, code, uh, issue. And what I was thinking as an alternative, because I've got people calling me all the time, I thought this might be a good alternative. If we remove that until such case as the state, uh, either allows us or if they don't allow us, then it's a moot point. But if they allow us to, uh, uh, have ADUs, we wouldn't restrict the, uh, use for, uh, timeframe. And we would be able to go forward with some of the people. And I do believe that even if someone rents it as an Airbnb, let's say, that there's a saturation point, if we've hit that, it won't matter. I do believe that most people were looking either for, uh, family members or long-term rental. That's what they're saying, I hope that's true. But I do think that for property rights, and maybe that's what the, uh, state is, uh, thinking this is, uh, that property rights, they should be able to do what they want. But this has killed the, the whole intent of providing ADUs. So, uh, what we have before you is, uh, simply a striking of that sentence. And I think whatever you think is right is, is what's right.
Okay. Uh, I'll move on, this is, we have a public hearing, so I'll call that, and then we'll have a discussion. Uh, open the meeting to a public hearing, is there anyone present? Who wishes to speak on this?
Yes, I'm in favor of striking that.
Okay, you can move to the mic here.
It's on.
Hello.
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Lisa Spiertie, and I'm in favor of striking that text from the zoning code. Um, I do have one follow-up question. So for the accessory dwelling unit, are the individuals owning those properties? Are they owner occupied to have, to have an ADU approved on the property?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they, there is no time limit on owner occupa- occupation. There isn't a restriction put on that, but they are owner occupied, yes.
Okay, so that, that mitigates my follow-up question was essentially if you have an ADU and a single family on one parcel, you're essentially now a duplex.
Right.
Right, but if you're owner occupied, you have some regulatory there.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Okay. Has anyone else emailed or telephoned to you in terms of pro or con?
No.
I thank you for your input. Is there any further? I'll call the public hearing to close then. Uh, commission discussion, commission comments, questions?
I, I can, I, I have a question regarding that. I thought that the main structure on property needs to be owner occupied.
That is the intention.
But the accessory dwelling is what, is what to that.
That, right, that's exactly right.
Okay. And we still have, that the, the accessory dwelling unit has to have a full kitchen and bath, is that right?
Um, it doesn't have to, but it, it, to be an actual dwelling unit, it has to have a kitchen, bath and, uh, and bed area.
How are we going to know whether there is a family member staying in the, um, dwelling unit? The auxiliary dweller, what do we call it? Accessory dwelling unit. How do we know if there's a family member in there? Or if it's being rented as a, um, short-term rental? In which case they would need a tax ID and et cetera, et cetera.
And they will need that. Uh, if it's a family member, they, they can have it, you know, they can have the, the building inspector come out and verify that. But it will be, it's verified by the building inspector. Uh, if they are doing something like a short-term rental, they will have to, um, uh, you know, pay the taxes. I, I'm going to do further research on this, but I believe the information we had from the last meeting, I, my understanding is, and we're, I'm looking into getting verification on that, is that the short-term rentals, Airbnb, Verbo, pay a certain amount of tax to the city, uh, to the, uh, state and that that tax comes back to the city. I want to verify that for the next meeting, so that you have that information.
So, when we were very first talking about ADUs, we were talking about it as a way to, uh, help the community with, I mean, the initial premise of this whole entire thing was to help, uh, locals, um, have some place to stay. And, you know, so when we started it, we started with one thing and now we're ending up here.
Yeah.
And my concern has always been really two things. How do we police that? You, you know, and I'm just saying, I don't want to be negative, but there is no way that one person who is already over taxed in his responsibilities, there, we're setting that person up to like have a heart attack, have to die, or work him to death, um, before he retires. Or, um, then we're in charge of compliance again, which is the issue that we're coming up against once anything comes up in front of this board. It's a matter of compliance. And so, that's still my concern. And then the other thing is if you have a property and it has a bathroom and a kitchen, like my property, um, on Clausen can actually have another ADU, it can have an ADU on it. But then I'm also, we're going to be tap, we're going to be adding to the already, uh, and I'm just talking about Old Bisbee here, we're already talking about more toilet paper, more grease, more water, more of this, more of that. So is, is, and we'll just take mine as an example. If I choose to put an ADU on there and I'm, um, tapping into the sewer system, am I paying still one sewer bill? Or, or what, how does that work?
My, uh, understanding of it is that, that if it's rented out, if it's not a guest room for a family member and it's actually rented out, then it will have, uh, two sewer systems essentially. Um, that, that will all happen, that inspection, and, and I know that enforcement is a giant issue for me and I've been working on it, and it, it's a tough one. But to build this, they have to pull a permit. So they're then in the system and they're, I'm working on and don't know that it'll happen, but I, on other, it's not a, uh, certified need for someone who goes out and sees, you know, to see if there's indeed a, a relative or how is it going to be, um, used if it's, that this puts them on the map if they are a short-term rental. But they, if they are using it as an income property, they have to pay for the sewer and additional. If they are you renting it, not renting it, but if they are allowing a, a family member and a grandmother or a teenage kid or something, then it's considered like another bathroom. And that would not have to, um, have, uh, a separate meter or whatever.
So then that brings up another point that I brought up a while ago, is if we have a property and the property has an ADU on it, and then the current seller employs me to sell it. Um, to answer the follow-up question that you didn't ask, um, it is still a single primary home, but for lending purposes, it becomes an income-producing property for a multifamily, but it becomes a, it becomes something other than a primary unit to the lender. So basically what we're doing is, let's just say we have 6,000 people, residents in the city of Bisbee, and let's just say 3,000, well, go completely in half. 3,000 of them are worried about where they're going to live and how they've already been priced out, especially over the last five years. So now a house comes up on the market and they get all starry-eyed and think that they're, and then they can't get it because they can't get a loan. So I'm just saying it's, it has the potential and I'm not, I, I am actually for this idea. But one of the real life consequences that it's going to be is it's actually going to price out more and more locals from homeownership.
Yeah. Uh, the, you're right, on some lenders, not all lenders have that. And, um, my, my research on that, because you brought this up during the, uh, the time we were looking at this, also that, that is sometimes, and this may have the, the demographic you're talking about, that can be a deterrent for someone who's coming in at a lower down payment. Uh, but there are lenders who lend for it, conventional lenders, and there are loans based on down payment that don't care if that is a, uh, you know, they're, they're not looking to whether it's a multi-unit or not. Um, but you have a valid point and if, you know, that's sort of why I'm bringing this back to you folks, because it, it isn't exactly the same as what it was. I'm hoping we can come back at another time and say, good, we, we have this. But if you want to keep it on a moratorium until then, that is your choice.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that when a person, especially a local, um, you know, applies for a loan, most likely it is a service industry position or it's a, you know, a bartender or something like that. And I'm just saying, if you're a local, most of the time you're getting either a VA or an FHA loan. That has been my personal experience. I'm sure if we ask other Realtors, I, I can tell you they're probably going to say kind of the same thing. Now, uh, it has completely shifted to Bisbee, which has always been like a secondary home anyway. But that is, that is the conversation, that it's becoming more of the haves and the haves not, especially in the last four and a half years. So if we have people, um, that have the means and can do a conventional loan, great. But then what about the people that, which was the premise of the whole reason that we brought this up? So whatever direction the city wants to move, I am not attached to any one thing. I am just simply trying to be fair and equitable and saying, when this was placed in front of us, this was our intentions. Now, we can change and evolve and grow with this, just as like we have to change and evolve and grow with everything. But now we have a real scenario that this is going to put even a more unlevel playing field for the people that actually reside in the zip code of 85603.
The, uh, and you do have in here a statement as to what the purpose is. So you're right, that is the purpose, was to make it, and to help the economics and monetization for some of their property. When that person that you're talking about, that, in that demographic buys a house that doesn't have a unit, they can build a unit, if, hopefully they can get the loan for it, and then have either some income and help someone who's also working here in town and trying to make it, and, you know, ends meet. They can do that, or they could rent it. And, uh, this gives them the ability to rent it as a, a moneymaker perhaps, unless the market gets saturated. But here it says, "The purpose of the code section is intended to support multigenerational households and encourage flexible housing options for seniors and provide supplemental income for homeowners." And if you don't change anything, if you just go back to a moratorium, that's still the intention. But the intention, even if you strike this sentence, is in that. And you may want to add a sentence in place of that, that the intention, I, I think that can happen. I don't know, it'll go back, either way, it'll go back to council. But I think you could say the intention is to, uh, encourage, uh, you know, some sort of economic, uh, equality or something like that.
Yeah, and it is, and, uh, go ahead, Michael.
Okay. No, I was just, um, I like the idea as we came up with it.
Yeah.
What this has, has loosened up the rules so much. Um, a number of examples, I know people that live, I come from Phoenix, that had, and in the whole historical districts, they had detached garages. They, they turned them into a child's, you know, a teenager's bedroom with a kitchen and all that other stuff. And then when the kid goes to college, it becomes an Airbnb. I also lived in Moon Valley, which was an HOA, a loose HOA. Uh, they allowed granny shack, we call them granny shacks there. Uh, allowed them to have them in there. But the stipulation was that they couldn't be rented, which kind of defeats the whole purpose of this. Uh, that were just the two thoughts I had. I just, uh, I just see this as becoming a way to, you know, turn your property and turn it into an Airbnb.
And, and I do believe that they could set, an HOA could set a, um, restriction on renting at all, but they can't restrict how long it can be rented. So in Moon Valley, that might have been what kept it from going into a, an Airbnb sort of situation.
Yeah, so when we were talking about the multigenerational, I mean, I told, again, I totally get what the intention was. But when, a, a lot of the times, I do feel bad for the other boards of 85603 because 99% of the time when a problem comes up, it's because of, we're almost landlocked by everything in Old Bisbee. So 99% of what we talked about is, is Old Bisbee anyway. In this particular situation, um, you know, since I moved back here full-time at the, uh, end of 2014, so I've been a full-time residential Realtor since 2014. I can tell you, um, all of the people that I know, so every single person that's old in Old Bisbee, and I know a lot of people, I have helped them systematically move down the hill to San Jose or to Warren because they're aging out. They can't, um, they can't carry their groceries up the steps anymore. They can't fight for parking anymore. And, and they've been an artist for the last 35 years, so they can't get another loan. So these people, the people that we're referring to, all the people that I love and been around for 23 years are naturally aging out. So these ADUs, if we look at the whole entire thing of Old Bisbee, we're talking about, for that purpose, only constructing ADUs on Tombstone Canyon where a person can actually park and walk. Anyplace else, a multigenerational person or, or a, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be an ageist because, you know, I'm getting there myself, but I'm just saying.
I'm there.
Yeah, I understand what, what we started off to do. And the thing is, is I think that it is the intention of, you know, all of the boards, uh, and for the commissions, we want to enjoy what we moved into and we don't want certain change. And we want other change and we know what the intentions are. But then it all boils back down for me, it boils back to who are we actually helping in the end? Because as, again, in my profession, I'm selling it, I'm selling the house either way. My intention is to help someone stay in their home and not have to move down to wherever. Sierra Vista or wherever.
Right. Well, we do, the, the intention is to keep the population and add to it here. And you're right, you have really good points.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, we are not stopping Airbnb. We're, we're not stopping it. If Airbnb goes under and then there's going to, and VRBO goes under, then the next wave of whatever, the next thing is, because it's a tourism-based thing, and as long as we're tourism-based, we, you know, this is my, this is my soapbox, this is my opinion. We need to bring the kind of tourism that we as a community want to foster and nurture. If we wanted to have, uh, dogfighting tourism, I am sure that it probably wouldn't do well in Bisbee being a dogtown. But if we wanted a cannabis tourism, I am sure that would do very well here, uh, in, in our, in our, uh, in our county. So taking what kind of tourism, if it's ecotourism or turning into, you know, the line trail south, um, if, we need to, we need to, as a, as a community, navigate where we want the conversation to go and then infill it from there, because tourism is not going away. And neither is, I won't say Airbnb, but that platform.
Some sort of short-term rental.
If it goes under, something else is coming up.
I, I just wonder what the future is in, with the state in, um, continuing with their policy of not regulating the number of ADUs. And I know I read something recently, um, that there really is a push to get the state away from regulating, or not regulating ADUs and putting the decision back on the cities and counties.
Yeah.
And it might be worth, I mean, I know we have to take that sentence out because it goes against state statute. But it might be worth putting this on hold until we see what the future of the ADU policy of the state is.
And there is no, uh, need for you to remove this, I, I want to make that clear. If there, uh, this isn't coming before you because this has to be removed. Why it's coming before you is for us to go forward with the ADU, uh, program, it would have to be removed. But if, we are on a moratorium anyway, the, the attorney and the, the state and probably people I don't even know are working on this. So you could just vote to keep it the way it is for now. And it will eventually, uh, either that, that will be found to be against state regulations or they will accept that we have the autonomy to limit the rental period in our community. But what I was asking for was only because I've gotten so many people who are wanting to do this and had been watching along the way, and it's a disappointment. But it may be that they have to wait longer.
Further comments?
Yeah, and my, and my only other comment is, is I cannot see, um, I, I can see where going forth, forth with ADUs, that is going to, um, that is going to actually help a lot of the homeowners. And I just can't see where it's going to help the people that we initially wanted to help with this. And, and I mean, not that that won't be one or two, but the numbers are going to be so out of balance. Um, and then if someone comes, um, you know, on Facebook or private message me or, you know, whatever it is through all the forms of communication, and they say, we wa- we watched it or we heard that you said this. I am all for helping Bisbee grow and, and turn into what it wants to become. And if we constantly stay the same, um, we are not 1980s, it's not 1980s anymore. So we need more input from the community, we need more people, not on Facebook or not some social media, but we need participants actually saying, this is what we want for the future of our city. Because this is going to cause, in my opinion, this is going to cause more of a divide. And either way, the more will get more and the less will still be on Facebook trying to figure out how to, how to navigate that change.
Yeah. Uh, the way we figured it in, in the city government is that there will be a saturation point. And I understand you're saying you don't, I think I've heard that, that you don't think there is. The, there, we get people constantly, still coming to town at the entry level. Renter, uh, sharing spaces with people, um, single mom with a kid, you know, I get a lot of this. Um, and there is a need to help those people. They can rent, they, they're working, you know, a few days a week, they've got four jobs and, you know, it's, and I meet these people every, every week. Um, we want to help them. If this doesn't do it, then we should, we should look to other things, they need the help. But I do think that my, my belief is that, that people being able to build something out in their, sort of essentially in their backyard, will help the people who need to rent at a entry level. But I think everything that you've said is a valid point and I, I, I'm not disputing it. I, I think that, you know, maybe this just needs to be, I don't know. But maybe you guys would think it needs to be helped.
When we're talking about Warren or we're talking about San Jose or we're talking about, you know, even the language that, you know, other sales professionals use, where like, you know, we, you know, this is, uh, this is where the county workers are, this is where a lot of families are, this is where the hospital is, this is where the, you know, so, and when we're saying that and then everybody, I'm telling you, if I have 10 buyers, I'm telling you, nine of them want to be in Old Bisbee and I'm telling you, the first question out of their mouth, every single time, all 10 times, is, you know, how can we Airbnb it? Do you know anyone that would, could clean it? Every single time, 10 out of 10 buyers, and I can't be the only person that that's happening to. I can't.
Yeah. I, I just hope there's a saturation point, or else we're just a, a big Airbnb supplier. You know, it's, and all of our restaurants are run by Cisco, you know, it, it, I don't know, but it, it just, that's a sad story.
And I'm saying that's a national conversation, that is, to Bisbee, that is a national conversation.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Are there further comments, questions? I was, I, my comments are that when we pass this, I was concerned about this particular sentence and it certainly was contrary to, to how our legislature and governor has been dealing with Airbnb's. So I knew that was going to be a legal challenge. Certainly we've got an election coming up, uh, and, and we're not here to promote any candidates, but certainly this has come up in, in discussions with these candidates. Uh, and so, uh, hopefully there's going to be some change in the next election. And so hopefully there's gonna be some change in the next election. A couple of other points, and that is that, one, the research on tourism indicates very clearly that the economic benefit of tourism largely goes to the community where the person, the visitor spends the night. And we say we're a tourism town, but if those individuals have to live, go elsewhere to spend the night, uh, the economic impact is greatly reduced. Another point is that we talk a lot about Old Bisbee, but certainly my interest, being a resident of Warren, is there's a large number of these that were, were built historically. And we're talking about building something new in your backyard. Well, I think what this is gonna address is individuals who had something in their backyard, um, and has been discontinued for whatever reason, uh, and now might be an incentive to renovate that and to, uh, rent it. And up to now, we have not allowed individuals to do that if they did not, we did permit a kitchen. And so that certainly then discouraged individuals from, from doing that, and so this may change. I was interested in walking just last night, making a circle around Warren, there's a little sign in the place, a ridiculously low rental price on this building that has not been idle for some time, for, I mean, as long as I can remember. And so there is some things like this happening, and so there is more, uh, ways of looking at this than Old Bisbee or as Airbnb, so, uh...
Yeah, I have gotten a lot of inquiry, and a lot of the support is from, uh, people in Warren and San Jose that, that, you know, they, and it doesn't have to be a unit outside of the, of the house, it can be a, a room within the house. Um, it, but it just can't be more than forty percent of the, of the square footed. But the, I think the interest, you know, you and I have gone to some meetings in, um, in the Bis, in the Warren neighborhood group, and I'm hearing that they're very interested in it, I hear it just anecdotally, as a citizen, I hear it from people that they have something that they wanna turn into a, back into it, and I think that's a common thing. So I think you have good points also.
Then, you know, to bring that up, so I agree with you, I just happen to be a historic preservation specialist. In part of my downtown career, I lived in downtown Phoenix for many years. Um, I had my historic designation as a real estate agent there, and I, I live in FQ stories, I know exactly, I know where Moon Valley is. It's the same thing is that, um, the, the garages back in the day were actually built for cars that were much smaller, and the actual, so the character of the carriage homes that he's referring to in downtown Phoenix, they were designed so that the front of the cars could actually point and go in there. So, so, um, the other, the other thing that we have to bring up is that we are also struggling with our historic preservation guidelines as a town. So, for example, Warren was the very first master planned community in the state of Arizona, that's what it was. So if we're going to designate Warren, and Warren's gonna have its historic status, and then we're gonna have, you know, two or three or four or five designations, and it's Old Bisbee, and then it's Warren, and then Warren markets itself as the very first master planned community, then everyone can buy into being proud of the carriage house in Warren, because there's only like, I don't know, less than twenty in Old Bisbee that are carriage homes. Um, then they can go on board with that, but then we need to get our DRB, who, you know, may or may not have the expertise or the knowledge, or the, the depth of knowledge, to say, um, "This is what you can do in Warren, this is what you can do in Old Bisbee," because that's a, almost a forty-year difference. So how you're going to, then, then, we're challenging DRB to, one, get on board with Chicago guidelines, and not just decide what, what we're gonna do this week. And then say Bisbee was in eighteen, you know, eighteen eighty-eight, and then we have nineteen nineteen down here. So what are we doing up there, and what are we doing down there? And, and, and I'm not suggesting that for one minute that we don't make that difference, you know, that difference. Because then when we go out to San Jose, then you're moving into mid-century modern. What is not, we keep on treating it like it's the same, but somewhere along the line, we always get held up, because they're not the same, that they don't have the problems that they don't have, and they don't have the problems that Old Bisbee has. And I think that if we wanna talk about historic preservation guidelines, or hi, or, or neighborhood pride, then what they might do in Warren is completely different from Old Bisbee. And then I can tell you, the people that are moving, moving in, the, the people that are buying into the community, I know they wanna do right, I mean, there's not a person that, you know, for a long time, that wanted to not follow some sort of guidelines. It's just that the guidelines, we're not sure what we're doing. We all, we all have to be on the same page.
Any further comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I can't make a motion, I'll, I'll motion to table it.
Oh, second that. All in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye. Better get this table. I know that the council has been discussing the whole issues of Airbnb, so I know that's something that they're, feel very strongly about, and I certainly you can convey that, you know, to them, that this presidency, that once it's clarified politically, you know, we have
When we, you, you voted for something and, and you're keeping it, that's, I think that's a logical way of doing it. It's just, you know, to, for the some that wanted to move forward, I brought it to you just to see if that was something you wanted to do. We, I will bring it, that sentiment to, to them.
Because I, you know, I think that certainly there are individuals who will, as you say, individuals have spoken with you, who wish to go on and do a, uh, a unit on their property, and if their intent is to use either as a mother-law house, or, or family members, or to rent it long-term, they can go ahead with this, the current, current ordinance that was approved by us and recommended to the council, which I understand they've approved as well.
Yes.
It would only interfere with those who, who, uh, see this as a legal challenge and wanna challenge the thirty-day limit. So we can probably live with that until everything is clarified.
Well, we're, we're not going forward with the ADU at all until, um, we have something back from the state that clarifies our ability to either put this in, or that we have to remove it, and then we'll come back to you again and tell you we have to remove it. This was an option, not a mandatory at this point.
Because I know that, you know, and we, the city of Tucson held a number of public hearings on this, and I'm not sure what they did in, in follow-up to the, to those educational programs that we sent a link around, and many of us viewed, and were very, very informative in terms of, they're certainly debating this exact issue there. And, uh, and so I think everyone is desiring to move forward in terms of providing additional apartments, but are concerned about the domination of that by Airbnb, so...
And my understanding is that Tucson, uh, did not limit the, uh, the amount of time that it could be rented. Or didn't, didn't make it a, a, it could be temp, it could be a, a short-term rent, you know, if you built one. And it's an investment to build it too, so it's, uh, you know, now with construction costs so high, Mike knows that, it, a little, you know, six hundred square foot, or a little three hundred square foot building is not cheap.
I just think we feel like we wanna stay true to the purpose of this.
Out of Old Bisbee, there is, is there many Airbnbs outside of Old Bisbee?
Yes.
So there's quite a few outside of there's.
You mean in this general area?
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at, we're trying to preserve Old Bisbee, you know.
Oh, oh, outside in the other neighborhoods like.
Yeah, outside of Old Bisbee, is there a lot of Airbnbs?
I wouldn't say there's a lot, but it compared to Bisbee, uh, to Old Bisbee, but if you look at the, um, just here's a good example, uh, Moon, uh, Moon Canyon, is that the?
Yeah.
The, those, uh, they were trailers that were made into some cute little colorful cottages. Those are Airbnb's. Uh, there are quite a few within the Warren area. I don't know of any, I, I know people are looking at ADUs in San Jose, quite a few people and Donglely, but that I don't know if the, that any of them are looking for Airbnb and I don't know of anyone from Warren that has asked, that's looking for it. I do know that people from Warren have told me they're looking to rent out their ADU that they have and they'd like to resurrect it and we sort of, you know, it was before the code and now it's not allowed.
This is such a contentious, um, subject that, um, if I go to the post office and someone will say, oh, congratulations, I know you sold so and so, what are they gonna do with it? Are they gonna turn it into an Airbnb? And first question out of the mouth. And then the second thing is if a person has a home and there's a few residents, it's all, it's, it's literally, it's, it's like the subject of COVID, which I'll, I'll just spell that. Um, if you say something on Facebook, someone will say, oh, by the way, um, I'm coming back into town and I'm gonna charge a reasonable get rent. And then everyone's like, yay, good for you, good for you, and blah, blah, blah. So it's just, it's in every, it's in every dialogue, it's in every conversation that we have, it's in everything that's presented and it's, it's like the haves and the haves not, and maybe there's a better word for that, but anyone, um, that, that can enhance their bottom dollar, they're going to do it. Um, and then, and then it's just a matter of, oh, good for you that you're gonna just rent to, for a reasonable rent or market rent. Market rent's the other one. You see that all over Facebook, what's market rent? What's market rent? Well, market rent, it's, it's not sustainable in this county. It's too high for this county. So I, if we, if we move into the dialogue of not just ADUs, but, um, building tiny homes or, um, you know, something else for the community members that are always going to be in a six to $700 price range, um, then we're addressing the problem for, you know, the housing. Uh, I just happened to be watching KBOA in that La Frontera that just, um, they just completed their first project in Tucson. And so they had a lot of really nice coverage on that. So it was a, it was a very hopeful for me, knowing that they completed something with, uh, nine investors and $14 million or something like that, but they got their first project done away in Tucson. No one is going to deny that we, that we need, um, some sort of housing for all of the rent, all of the rental, um, you know, fluctuations. And if we are looking for, uh, a 1,400 to $1,800 price point, that does not help the average person who actually lives here.
You ready? Thank you.
Here's a question. Uh, I know of several individuals who are modifying what was an historic accessory building with the intent of making it available so their kids and grandkids can visit them. Up to now, it's been prohibited from doing that because we say you cannot have a kitchen there and they're wishing to do that. How are we gonna, with the ordinance as it is here now, how, how will we respond to those individuals?
Yeah, that's the problem is that it's kind of black and white. Without this, we say that's not, they're, they're allowed to make it a sleeping room essentially, but they can't put a kitchen in it and, uh, they can't put a bathroom, is my understanding. Um, right now, we would have to say, you can't put a kitchen.
But did, did, did the city council pass this? That what we submitted to them earlier?
They passed exactly what you submitted and the, uh, the reason that it's on hold is that the state challenge, it challenged the, if the rented minimum rental period can be, uh, not if, no. Uh, the rented minimum rental period can be no less than 30 days. That's what the state challenged. And they, the state is, um, challenging these sort of restrictions everywhere. We thought we had gotten a, a, a better view of how to get around it, not to get around it, but how to present it so that it was part of this special, um, uh, permit or variance, if you will. Um, and they didn't see it that way. So that's why it came back, but, uh, because there are people who, you know, we, I don't know, we'd have to change it again, I guess, if we said you can have a relative in there and that can have, uh, a kitchen, but I think that opens it up to a gray area of, are they in compliance? That's the compliance issue we discussed last week. I, you know, I think that then we need to have more enforcement. Right now, um, with the building inspector inspecting these as they're, they're branded, whether they're built out within a dwelling or a, a, an accessory dwelling unit, the, the building inspector's still involved. I think if we just said, yeah, you can kind of do this gray area, it would be harder to enforce. And I think it needs to in this, we, because what Nancy's saying is, is true that it's, this is one of the most contentious issues in the, in the city is who's renting? Is anyone renting? Who's able to buy, you know? And we have the workforce housing and I have asked that they start to look at workforce rental also. I don't know how that's run, but we're looking at it, you know, does the city become a landlord? Probably not something they want, but what they did with La Frontera with Hillcrest is great. There, I think there's 32 units built in, or 33, built into the, the, uh, first go around, which may start, uh, construction sometime in the fall. And their ultimate, uh, goal is to have, um, in the next few years, 60 units of affordable housing and that will be wonderful. We also have a, um, seventeen acre parcel, um, on Melody Lane that was just donated to the city and it's platted and, and, uh, it doesn't have utilities or paving or anything yet, but we're looking for, uh, we're going out to see if indeed there is a developer that can put the, the infrastructure together, but we are going to the, the same people we went to. There were about five, uh, developers that we went to for Hillcrest. It doesn't have to be 100% um, uh, affordable, but we can get a, an affordable component in it. I did have a, um, developer from New York came to see me and I, I don't wanna go on with anecdotal, but, uh, came to see me and wanted to do, um, under $100,000, essentially tiny homes on that property and, um, was going to be the bank for it. I thought it was wonderful, but he, something happened and he didn't pursue it. That was before it was donated to the city. So we're trying, but it is a big issue.
And this is, this the parcel that's at the Melody, the old middle school?
It's behind the school. It, it wraps like an L around it, yeah.
Yeah, I've been around long enough. I remember going, having the, the subdivision regulations were approved for that and we developed and.
Sierra and Cobra.
It never happened, okay?
Yeah.
Well, there's other stories that I'm hearing about people who are coming to town to do, do things in terms of for lower income housing as well, but we'll see. Okay. Agenda item two, review of the nuisance ordinance, uh, 022 dash 2001, section of the city code specifically regarding noise abatement. I guess this came up as a question from the commission here and you're responding.
Well, we're presenting it for your discussion.
Carry on.
This is, well, this is, this is what we have and, um, I don't remember exactly who brought it up, but I thought maybe they could speak to it. This is the, um, and I, it's a lot to read into the record, but, um, we do have some, and here again, I will say that, uh, compliance and enforcement are issues. Um, there's a reluctance to ticket vehicles. There's a reluctance to close down a venue that has music going if it's one night and it's, you know, no, not, nobody's complaining. There's a reluctance to say, well, it's, you know, it's 10 o'clock, you should, you know, fold up your tent. They, so there is a sort of laissez faire attitude and I, I, I do think it actually has gone to, uh, something that Mike brought up before in a meeting was graffiti. I think that sometimes it, it goes that far, but I, you know, you, you have an ordinance, this is city code, but, um, I don't know if, you know, this was presented and I don't know if you wanted to look at it as a, something for zoning, you know, are there areas, and once again, we're probably talking about Old Bisbee, um, but are there areas that should have a different, um, nuisance regulation than other areas? We have that for historic overlay district on, on some issues of parking and setbacks and things like that where there, the tolerance is less, no, more tolerance in Old Bisbee as to, you know, you know, you're five feet from the property line, that's okay, you know, whatever, or maybe it's less than that. Um, sort of because of the historic nature of it, that also seems to be the entertainment area. Do we want to have a, a zone? And that would be the difference from it, of it, from city code is if it's a zone that is, you know, is it the overlay district? Is there the, the historic commercial district? Should that be, which is actually close to where I live, and should that be, um, allowed to have music later outside? A, a lot of these venues have outside now, uh, especially since COVID, V I D, uh, that, you know, there's been a sidewalk cafe kind of, um, I don't know, ambiance encouraged, which is nice, but is the, is music and noise too loud?
I thought there was an entertainment district. I don't see it in this part.
I, I don't know of it. There is a commercial, uh, historic district in Old Bisbee, but I don't know that it's considered an entertainment district and I do know that.
I think it, I think that Brew would all just consider it an entertainment district.
And it goes all the way up subway and stops right about there, just short of the Royale. And one of the overlay maps that I've seen, it says entertainment district.
Huh.
And I saw that when David Smith was mayor.
Right.
That, that, right. So they, so they, they actually put out that, they showed you exactly where it went.
But did they, did they have different regulations for the entertainment area?
Yes.
It was just, okay.
The curfew was not 10 o'clock, it was 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock.
Outdoor music?
All just noise.
Noise, yeah. That's, yeah, I, I'm sorry, but I'm not aware of that.
I'm gonna jump off subject here. I know you're, you're retiring here from us for a while, but could you get Naina to send us links to where all the codes are?
Oh, yes, and you can, you can.
I know we can go on the slide, but I can't find it on the site.
Okay, okay, then.
And I don't know how many, will us have?
I will.
All three, there's three codes, is there not?
Uh, there's city code, there's.
The driving code and the building code.
And, well, the building code is separate from it, but, uh, that's not a city code, that's the international code, but the, uh, there is.
There's addendums to the, to the building code.
For the city, yeah, and.
The city, addendums to the building code.
Yeah, we can, and we can give you links to all that stuff. And there's also historic district.
I would even suggest you guys send that off to the DRB group too. It's hard, it's, it's, it's hard to find. I found it once about two years ago, but haven't, haven't been able to find it again.
There also is the city charter and we'll, we'll give you that too. It's, it's all online.
I will, but it's difficult to find out.
And we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But that would help us out with entertainment just because I, I believe it's somewhere, I don't know if it's a city code or the zoning code.
Well, I can, you know, the, the, probably the person with the longest link to it is Joe Ward and I will talk to him.
Well, I was just, uh, well, slight comment that the John Paul, John Paul has become a music venue and, uh, and I was told when I was present, you were as well at recent function that, uh, they had a complaint from a neighbor and by usual consent, they agreed that they were gonna close this place or close down the music at the John Paul at, I think it was 9 o'clock rather than 10 o'clock. So I mean, these are the types of things that can happen in terms of people communicating rather than calling the police.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that's the only way it's gonna work. And of course, it's, you know, uh, again, I live in Warren, so I don't, I don't know what I'm talking about in terms of what it's like to, to live in Old Bisbee and deal with some of the issues that noise and graffiti and so forth that are there, but anyway.
But you do have fireworks, you do have, uh, events on the Vista that, that are nighttime events. They, and they're planning more, they're bringing Christmas to Warren rather than, um, um, in Old Bisbee, uh, the Christmas celebration of lights. Well, it's, it's, I think it's a celebration of lights. Matt Gurney, uh, seems to be spearheading it and, um, it, it will be, I think it's called Bisbee Christmas on the Vista or something like that. But, so there are.
Used to be a city park.
Right, right, yeah. I know Santa very well, so I, uh. He's one of my idols.
So is there any feedback to staff here in terms of providing what the current situation is? Uh, and certainly.
I will look for that, that designation of an, an entertainment district. I don't know.
There was an overlay map, there was a colored overlay map.
Okay. And that could have been something that was, that, I do know that there were several, uh, maps in the, and they may have been in that, uh, in the park, parking studies that Judy and I looked at. And I think that might have, because they wanted to build the, the concept of, and that was when someone was still saying you could build on the, the pages parking lot essentially, it wasn't the pages at that time, but the, uh, I don't know the name of that parking lot if, without that, but I think there was something in that, but I, I will find out what that is and whether it has any.
It was right at the very beginning of my tenure, which was probably about a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I know this was, I have to confess, I can't remember whether action was taken on this or not. I was on the council at the time that this was proposed, it was discussed and I kind of thought we approved it, but anyway, I don't.
I will find out.
I don't, I don't remember anymore.
Yeah. I'm good if I remembered at the end of the night or the.
It seems like we've covered a lot in this, in the city code. I've, I've read through it before the meeting and if, if we live by the city code, it doesn't look like there are any obvious problems. The problem is enforcement of the city code. So I, yeah, compliance.
Compliance.
So I, I think that, I think the code as it's written, uh, with the addition of the entertainment district conditions is, is workable.
And I, and I will get that for you. I do, this is not unique, uh, to Bisbee. I, when I was, uh, director of community development in Provincetown, people would say, we should have a law that says, or a regulation that says, and I would say, we do. I just, this one I don't know about, but we do have that, you know, they, that if something's going beyond 10 o'clock, it, it can be reported and, but they have the same, compliance and enforcement are, are issues that every town has varying degrees of shades of gray on that. And it, sometimes I think people, uh, think they're doing the right thing by not enforcing at that moment. There's, you know, there are things I can think of where they could think that, but it, we can either, you know, going forward, this comes up here quite a bit and this is sort of, uh, the genesis of a lot of, uh, ideas about how the city, the livability and, I mean, that's part of what you folks are entrusted with. And I think if, if we're going to not enforce it, it should maybe be obvious that we're not doing that, that, or maybe that's an issue that's beyond zoning at this moment, but is, is generated by you that we look at with other, uh, commissions, that enforcement needs to be, uh, there is a police and fire commission and that maybe they need to hear, you know, what's, what's coming from here.
Police and Fire Commission have canceled all their meetings until at least August.
Yeah.
They have no cloud.
Well, they, they, it's a good place to start, I think, but maybe they don't, I don't know. And we are going, I don't know if you folks know this, but we are going to be finding new leadership for the, the chief retired and maybe, um, you know, that's something that citizens, if they want more enforcement, maybe they, that's something they bring to the, their board representative. I don't know.
Well, certainly our two newspapers publish the more interesting cases in terms of the police blotter, in terms of what is called in and, and policemen are responding to. I mean, they're, of course, they're doing the, you know, the ones that are entertaining and obviously to readers and, and, and not all of them, but the fact is that there are, every day of the week, there are numerous calls to our police department from people who have complaints of somebody. Uh, and certainly some of them sound kind of bizarre, but anyway, they are responding to those. Um, and, you know, there's a limit on, you know, again, I'm not wanting to defend, well, being a police officer here is certainly an additional challenge. But certainly it's not that they're not responding. I mean, if someone calls and says there's a noise problem next door, I'm sure they respond to it. That would be indicated by us. Those types of cases are, show up in the newspaper, uh, but, but doesn't necessarily mean.
I think Tom Bellis was asking this on this year. I don't think there was any specific question. I think he just wanted the documentation.
Yeah.
And I thought it looked fine. It's, like I said, the entertainment district, I think, has some exclusions.
Well, we will get some information out, if I can, I will get information for you about that.
Move on to agenda item three, discussion, possible direction of staff regarding a proposed code amendment designating the city of Bisbee Parks as non-smoking or vaping areas.
And that is up to you folks and, and we can do that. Um, if you would like something researched, we can do that. Um, I, we apparently have that in Gore Park, uh, the no smoking, no vaping. And if you'd like to expand that or make it a citywide, um, I just, I, I don't know how we, I, and I'm not even gonna pretend I know how we'll do that, but we could put something together that, that you could then, you know, comment on, we didn't do that for this go around because I thought maybe there was, I don't even remember who said.
It, it was me and it was specifically Gore Park and somebody, um, added in, uh, Grassy Park also.
John did, yes. John added, uh, oh, no, City Park, he added, so.
No, I think Grassy Park.
Grassy Park.
It was Grassy Park, which are, are two big tourist areas.
Yes.
And, I mean, I don't, it's illegal to shoot up in the park anyways, but the smoking would keep, um, the people that are shooting up and doing the drug deals from going there. If they can't smoke there also. And that was the intent of that. And then also, we're, we're, you know, we're trying to get into a smoke-free environment. I don't know who, who smokes here. Uh, I, I quit 30 years ago. But it's a healthier environment.
And there is gathering at these places. I just, you know, I, I can't really.
I will work into it. I will take the direction and try to come up with a proposal so we, I just.
If you'd like, that'd be great. And, and, um, Naina can put it together and put something before you.
I also know that before you took over the Vista Park, Farmer's Market, that was posted as non-smoking.
Was it, yeah.
And there were certainly some cases, individuals who ignored that, but I mean, I don't see that at all anymore. I don't.
Yeah, I don't see any smoking, but I, you know, people are trying to conduct commercial, it, it's very incubator, commercial, entrepreneurial stuff, but I don't think it, it serves their clientele or their, their customers to be smoking while they're trying to do, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I haven't noticed that at all. I mean, I, but I do know that was an issue before you took over, so that.
I, I did do some research into it just a little bit and found National Recreation and Parks Association has a, a paper on smoke-free parks. Uh, American Nonsmokers Right Foundation, they've listed municipalities with smoke-free park laws.
Huh.
And they only printed the first page because that's what Arizona's on, but it's like six pages long. And there's a study, 2014 study findings on smoke-free parks. The other office is on.
Oh, wait, there you are.
There, there is a huge amount of information and movements going to smoke-free parks. Um, for health reasons, for fire reasons, and it, it said that I think 30% of the litter in parks are cigarette butts, which don't have to be.
Right.
But my question on this whole issue was, I, I, I'm assuming this would go into city code if we did anything because that's where the alcohol restriction is.
Well, it could be a zone.
It's actually in the city code.
Yeah, but I think you, I think you could make it a zoning, uh, issue. I, I don't.
Make a recommendation to the city code.
You could do that too, yeah.
The other thing is, I'm wondering if we need to involve the Parks and Rec on the subject.
You might.
Because they oversee the parks.
We'll definitely want that because they're the ones that have to spend over and pick those things up.
Yeah, and they, they do meet quarterly, so they, there's time before their next meeting, I believe.
Yeah, it would be good to.
They were supposed to have one in May.
Yeah, it'd be good to communicate.
Yeah, I think, I think it's sort of a polite thing to do to, to, you know, ask other.
Right.
Just as, as a group just, uh, question, are we going to limit to just a couple parks or all public parks?
Public parks, yeah. I think so.
I mean, because then we get into what's good for this one might not be good for this one. So if you make it a blanket thing.
I, I, and they're all gathering places and.
And, you know, and, you know, I wanted to make the comment is, uh, I am actually a proponent, proponent for both recreational and medicinal cannabis, but I'm just saying it's different. It, it's, I am a non-smoker, um, just in general, but cigarette smoke is very different from cannabis smoke. And then cannabis smoke in large quantities can also affect, you know, you can get secondary lung cancer from a cigarette, but you can get high from that, from, so I'm just saying.
It's illegal in the state to smoke in public.
The, 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 the game changer is, is that we're not just talking about one thing that we were talking about. We are. we were talking about, we are also now have to include something new to the state of Arizona, which is recreational cannabis and, you know, and how, and how a person chooses to.
Yeah, well, we have, we have, I believe we have rules against public drinking, so, you know, it, and there's a lot of people who are pro-drinking, but they limit it in public, so maybe that's, maybe if.
Well, like the cannabis smoking in, in public is a very weak law. It's a fifty dollar fine ticket. It's not even a misdemeanor, it's a ticket and it does not increase with additional convictions. So it's, it's just a ticket, I mean, you can't get a speeding ticket on eighty, four hundred, four hundred dollars these days, so it, it just, it doesn't have any bite to it.
Yeah. And then that's a state law?
It's a state law.
And now we have a hookah lounge, right? So we have a hookah lounge, so I'm just saying, you know, just not to just limit it to cigarettes, but just saying what, as a community, what does, how does the community?
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean? Cause we're, cause that's, in a lot of these discussions, I think that we are just, just redeveloping who we are and how we want to grow.
And I think that you folks are the, you're, you're the genesis of that. It, you, you know people that tell you things and it sort of involves, I do, like, like this issue where you just said, do we do certain parks or all, you know, it probably is the best idea to do one or the other for all parks and it is the living rooms of, of the city or the, the, especially in this climate, it's the public spaces, you know, like it's the Grand Central Station or Penn Station in New York, they don't, you can't smoke in those and it is sort of that area for where people gather to do all kinds of things and see you right on that one and, but it, it does, the one word that keeps going through my mind is compliance, you know, is, is it, or enforcement? Is it, are people going to comply and if they do not, is it gonna be enforced? That is a good issue, cause you can make a lot of laws that nobody obeys.
Yeah, I certainly agree. If we talk with the parcel Recreation Commission, they're gonna say, good luck, we can't, if people pick up after the dogs, that's what they're gonna say, number one, in terms of cigarette butts or, you know, and, and, and most people do comply with that, but there are individuals that don't.
But if there weren't the signs of, how many people would not comply?
Right, and I.
I think a lot of people comply because it's illegal.
Right, and dogs, the dog poop is better than I saw it ten years ago, you know, it, and not unlike what Judy and I sort of came up with was that compliance for parking, if we had parking regulations and that, we don't, but if we did have them, that a decent percent of comply, I, I comply with things because it's the, the, sort of my neighbors expecting that, you know, so, you, you know, I think we do, we all do that, we, we, if we smoke, we wouldn't smoke around where there is signage, I think you're right, Mike.
There are some really cute, nice, friendly, no smoking in the park signs, too, that you'll see on the followers' websites. And even without compliance, I think if you have, if you take all of the people that use the parks and maybe sixty percent of them like to follow the rules, that's.
That's pretty good.
That's a pretty good, well, yeah. But, you know, at, at least there are some people that will comply with it and that's better than nothing.
Yeah, and I think that what we're looking for is an improvement on, I, I think that's what you folks are saying is, these are things that would be an improvement on the way of the quality of life. You know, the, the, I always throw in the other concept that I love is walkability and, and sort of the, and this cigarette thing falls in, or smoking thing falls into the, the health of the citizenry, but, but a walkable city, which I think we have, we don't get the, the proper rating, I think, because we don't have a Safeway or a grocery store and, you know, Warren is actually designated by the USDA as a food desert because we don't have fresh food, the, the best we have on a daily basis is grab and go or whatever that's, whatever that's called there and, you know, it's a tough one to say that we're eating healthy going there, but that is, a part of it is, I think, you know, I'm always looking for a way, you know, to expand, you know, mimosa, we, we talked about that earlier, I think, no, we didn't, that was earlier today, but, you know, a food store that closes is a, is a deficit, you know, Poco carries a lot of, of, you know, help to the community and, you know, maybe there's others like High Desert and the Cheese Shop, I don't know, but the Cheese Shop's kind of limited, but, you know, if a place is a, is a source of, of health, I think that's important and so it is important to decide what to do about smoking and, and other things. Maybe auto emissions will eventually be part of that and maybe the parking is, you know, if, if it become, if it gets to that point in the future, the parking is because of the health for the environment, you know, that certain vehicles and certain fuels are restricted or encouraged, I don't know.
Well, Mike, were you gonna?
Yes.
Take some recommendations back, I appreciate that, I think certainly the comment just signage is, is good in terms of, as, as an action we take. And controlling pigeons would be another thing in terms of what they defecate, I would certainly appreciate that, too, if we could arrange that.
To BBW.
Yeah, maybe everybody could get an umbrella.
Okay, are there further commission comments in terms of items you would like to bring to be discussed in future meetings or anything else? Again, we can't, we can't resolve anything here, are you gonna share?
I did have one, we were talking about parking last time and Nancy was saying about handicap parking areas.
Accessible, yeah.
Accessible parking areas. I actually noticed over the last week that a couple of the handicap parking stalls have been, have lost their signage. I'd like to add that on to a future agenda item, I don't think we can get to it next month, but let's put that on a rolling list as far as providing more accessible spots.
And I, and I'm not discussing this, but I think that we could roll that into the other parking regulations and we, I think that DPW said they were on board with that.
Other comments?
I just wanna let you know that I will be, not be here June sixteenth for the meeting.
Other comments? Or adjourned?
Thank you.
Thank you.